And gentlemen, I'll call the Missoula City Council meeting of March 27th, 2017 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, to the citizens of Missoula, to the people, to the citizens of Missoula. Do you wish to object? Do you wish to move ahead and withdraw from the House of Representatives?
And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Swainy, all council members are present. We have minutes from the meeting of March 20th. Without objection, they'll be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
The Public Safety and Health Committee will meet this coming Wednesday, the 29th of March. It's almost the end of March, people. It's hard to believe, but it's true. Public Safety and Health will start meeting at 9:40 in the morning and continue till 10:10 in the morning. The Parks and Conservation Committee will follow that from 10:15 to 10:35. Land Use and Planning will meet from 10:40 to 11 o'clock. Administration of Finance meets from 11:05 to 11:15. Public Works meets from 11:20 to noon. Budget Committee will meet from 1:00 to 2:30. And the Budget Committee of the whole will meet from 2:35 to 3:05. And all those meetings are being held right here in the City Council chambers. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to that committee's schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Mr. Evans.
Hi. My name's Bill Evans, and I'd just like to apologize to anybody if I've offended them in any way with my gracious and ignorant slight sayings and on Facebook. And it's been a new deal for me, so you have to work with me because I'm working with you the best I can. I'm praying for y'all. Thank you. I got a ministry now. Thank you. Love ya.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other general public comment this evening? Mr. Moore.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Bob Moore. The city, through the MRA, has 14 criteria for review and a request for assistance from the Missoula taxpayers. It's number 10. It states, "Types of financing available to the applicant: lender participation, commitments, industrial development revenue bonds, and state and federal grant monies." For example, are examined to assess the need for TIF assistance. That means they need assistance, or they don't get any funds from the taxpayers from the... That's not what we're doing, but that's what it says the criteria says, which is ignored, or I guess, from day one. The Stockman application states the following: under financial assistance, capital for the project is coming directly from Stockman Bank of Montana operating funds. I think that is really nice from them, really going to pay us themselves. There would not be a loan. Because there currently is very little increment in the Riverfront Triangle U R D, staff is proposing that MRA negotiate an arrangement whereby MRI... MRA reimburses the bank for the requested TIF over time, similar to terms negotiated with the Wilma and the First Interstate Bank. The balance sheet of Stockman, they're just about as wealthy as the city of Missoula, That was a billion, three billion. Stockholder surplus, $291,000... I suggest that the city consider the fact that they might could pay that million five that the taxpayer is going to pay. And John DeBerra had an article in here, or was quoting in the paper, that he wants Costco to move into an urban renewal district so the taxpayers can give them some money. So I guess Costco needs some money, too. Now, I want some money. I want some stock in Costco. So y'all go ahead and give them $20 million. The paper today lists six people under something called "We Care" for beds or whatever it was. I want to request to make sure that the city ensures that these six people, families, still pay their taxes. To heck whether they got a bed to sleep on, anything like that. Make sure they pay their taxes so that the city will have the money to give to Stockman South Gate Mall Shopping Center, $50,000 facade for a new casino. I see y'all are interested in casinos now. What I would like to request from the mayor, that you report next Monday, that you report next Monday, all the money that has come from TIF that has poured into the general fund. I read one article, I've forgotten where it was, excuse me, where you said the money was going to come pouring into the general fund, I think was the words. So I'd like to see a report to see what has happened so far. How much money has gone into the general fund from the TIF money paid to developers and businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. And that was four minutes. Anyone else this evening with general public comment? All right. With that, then, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in the City Council Standing Committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering those items together. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on those items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. We have 11 items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is always is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable totaling $458,259.07 for checks that are dated tomorrow, March 28th, 2017. Number two is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Zachary Reimer as alternate number two to the City Board of Adjustment for a term that begins immediately and expires on June 30th of 2020. Number three is to adopt a resolution of intention to annex 2718 through 2802 South Avenue West, lying north of the Community Medical Center and approximately three blocks west of Reserve Street, and legally described as a portion of Track 31 and lots 31A and 31B of the Coben and Dinsmore Orchard Homes Number Three. Addition and zone that property B2-2, which is a business commercial zoning district here in the city. All of this property is located in Section 30 Township 13 North Range and 18 West, Principal Meridian, Montana. Set a public hearing on all that stuff for April 17th, 2017. Number four is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Maria Chestnut to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee to complete a vacated term that commences immediately and expires on November 30th of 2018. Number five is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mr. John Romer to the Parking Commission Board for a term that commences May 1st, 2017, and ends on April 30th, 2021. Number six is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dan Doyle to the Police Commission for a term that begins May 1st, 2017, and ends on April 30th, 2020. Number seven is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Paul Filicetti and Kim Seberger to the Cemetery Board for terms that commence on May 1st, 2017, and expire on April 30th, 2020. Number eight is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of John Eisenman, Ross Mullenhauer, and Christine Ryan to the Parks and Recreation Board with terms that begin on May 1st, 2017, and expire on April 30th, 2020. Number nine is to approve an underground power easement for Northwestern Energy through McCormick Park, subject to terms of... to conditions of approval, and authorize the park's staff to determine the final exact location of the easement to account for any issues encountered during construction. Number 10 is to approve an authorized... or, excuse me, an underground power easement for Northwestern Energy through Heritage Park, subject to conditions of approval and authorizing the park's staff to determine the final exact location of that easement to account for any issues also encountered during construction. Number 11 is... it looks like it's a four-parter. "To approve a development agreement for a secondary emergency access with the old sawmill district at all across a section of the old Milwaukee Trail property and authorize the mayor to sign." The second part of this is to approve a secondary emergency access easement and maintenance agreement across a section of the Milwaukee Trail property adjacent to the old sawmill district, subject to the terms of the development agreement, and authorize the mayor to sign. The third part of this is to approve a new public trail and secondary emergency access easement across a sliver of land owned by the old sawmill district for rerouting of the Bitterip Branch Trail, and authorize the mayor to sign. And the final part of this is to amend the amendments... excuse me, approve the amendments to the Pollys Square Trail Construction Agreement, eliminating the snowmelt system requirements and placing the obligation for trail snow removal on the landowner, and authorizing the mayor to sign that agreement.
Thank you. Pardon me. Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Comments or questions from council members on the consent agenda? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On items number one through 11 of the consent agenda, Bentley... or, excuse me, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley... Bentley votes yes. Kears... Kears votes yes. DeBari... DeBari votes yes. Hetal... Hetal votes yes. Hess... Hess votes yes. Jones... Jones votes yes. Marler... Marler votes yes. Von Laasberg... Von Laasberg votes yes. West... West votes yes. And Wilkins... Wilkins votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have one special presentation in the form of a proclamation. Whereas Missoula residents value being good stewards of their city and its surroundings, and whereas using our local resources wisely, creating livable communities, and encouraging healthy neighborhoods helps provide sustainable environments for all Missoula residents in perpetuity, and whereas regular renewal of our commitment to expanding our understanding and knowledge of sustainable living practices in an urban environment is a valuable way to support the same, and whereas the original Earth Day, 47 years ago, in April 1970, focused on creating a sustainable world, and whereas spring brings the promise of new life, the hope of new ventures, and the start of great plans, now therefore I, John Aigan, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Sustainability Month in Missoula, Montana. And the crocuses are indicating that it is indeed a time for new life. We will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, items on this portion of our agenda: follow guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And our first public hearing this evening is on a conditional use at 730 Cherry Street for an accessory dwelling unit. And Ms. Baker has our staff report this evening.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jenny Baker with Development Services, and tonight we are going to discuss a conditional use request from Roberta Eklund to convert an existing accessory structure into an accessory dwelling unit at property located at 730 Cherry Street. This is the location of the property, shown by the blue star. It's in the Lower Rattlesnake, one and a half blocks northwest of Van Buren and about a block south of Greenell Park. The area is part of Missoula Ward One and the Lower Rattlesnake Neighborhood Council. The subject property and surrounding area is Zoned R 5.4 Residential. The 2035 Our Missoula Growth Policy recommends a land use designation of residential medium density with three to 11 dwelling units per acre in this area. This is the site plan. The structure outlined in red here is where the ADU will be. It's an existing structure on the property. Title 20 zoning regulations require three off-street parking spaces for properties with ADUs. This is the existing driveway, and there are two blue boxes that show existing parking. Both of these spaces are outside of the required 20-foot front yard setback. Here at the back of the lot, this is... that blue box is where the third off-street parking space will be. As required by Title 20 regulations, the space for the ADU will be accessed from the This is the floor plan for the ADU, which will be 320 square feet. Normally, Title 20 requires ADUs to be between 350 and 600 square feet. But since this is the conversion of an existing structure that was there before June 2013, it is not subject to the usual size restrictions for ADUs outlined in Title 20. Now I will show you some building elevations. This is the front of what will be the ADU structure. It is facing south. This is the east elevation, which is facing into the yard. And this looks north towards the back of the property and where the parking space will be located. We don't have a west elevation because it's really close to the property line and a fence. This is the existing main house. You're looking at the south elevation for this, and you can see on the side, although in the shade here, is the parking, and the ADU is here. As part of this project, the Missoula Municipal Code requires the alley behind the property to be paved from the western property line to meet with the extent of existing paving with the intersection of Jackson. So the new paving will go from here to roughly about here, or wherever engineering determines the paving is sufficient to get to the street. These are the review criteria to consider when considering a conditional use request: compliance with zoning standards. In this case, the project meets all applicable zoning regulations. As for compatibility with neighborhood character, it's an existing building which is compatible in scale and design with the other structures surrounding it, and it's in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood. The compatible operating characteristics: this proposed residential use is the same as all the uses surrounding it. And for traffic safety, any nominal additional traffic generated by this project won't pose inconvenience or detriment to existing traffic patterns or traffic safety in the area. As a result, staff recommends approval of the accessory dwelling unit conditional use request at 730 Cherry Street, based on the findings of fact, and subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report. That is all I have to tell you tonight, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. With that, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone care to comment on this proposed accessory dwelling unit? And with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members this evening? Mr. DeBari?
Ms. Baker, I'm wondering if you could remind me... I know that, as you said, the alley needs to be paved. Does the parking space adjacent to the alley or abutting the alley need to be paved as well?
It will be.
Thanks.
Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
So, did you get any negative comments when you polled the area?
There were two comments that we received. One is from Peter Lessica, who is part of the Neighborhood Council, and he generally is opposed to additional traffic in the area. The second comment we received is from Mr. Goldsmith, and he had several items he was concerned about, some of which were misinformation. He thought there wouldn't be parking provided off-street. As we've discussed, there will be. He referenced previous illegal conversion, and that was something that was handled through the compliance process and concluded in 2011. I can't remember his other points, but we tried to address them.
I will note that Mr. Goldsmith writes from his Paulson address.
Okay. Well, so...
Mr. Wilkins?
There haven't been a building permit done for this yet, has there?
A building permit can't be issued until after you determine whether to approve this request.
Right. So I would request that we see a building report on this, an inspection, to make sure the electrical... because apparently this was an old building that used to be an ADU, wasn't an ADU, and now it's going to be an ADU again. So a lot of these older buildings have bad electrical. So I would like to see the report of that, and probably the report on plumbing, but the electrical, I mean, concern.
Yes.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
My questions, Jenny, were kind of along the same line. Maybe you could elaborate on the conversion, and I'm referencing Mr. Goldsmith's letter, in the conversion of the structure, and you said that those issues had been resolved prior to 2011. Could you just elaborate that on some more?
I can't. In 2009, one of the neighbors filed a complaint with the city stating that the structure was being used illegally as an ADU or had been converted illegally into an ADU. So staff went and did an inspection and found that it had been converted. As part of the resolution of that complaint, the owner at that time was required to remove either the kitchen or the... what constituted the bathroom, so that it wouldn't be a separate habitable space. And they did that by taking out some of the bathroom fixtures. It was still permitted to be used as a studio by those owners, but it was no longer a separate habitable unit. And that is the state of it when the current owner bought it and came to us with the request to convert it.
One other question. So the parking pad in the back, in looking at the pictures of the property and the structures, there's no door on the back of the AD unit toward the alley that I can see. Is that correct? I mean, and it seems like there are very narrow spaces along the sides.
So I'll go back to the... So the driveway is 11 feet wide, and there's a little bit of space to the property line, six feet from one side, and then two feet between it and the house. A parking space has to be nine feet wide, so there's more than adequate space even on the sides of the driveway to fit that in there. At the back, the space can be parallel like this, and in that case, it will be 23 feet long and eight feet deep. You are right that the entrance to the ADU faces the street rather than the alley, but regulations say that the parking for the ADU has to be accessed from the alley, so...
Okay. Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
How far is the ADU from the main structure? What's the...
It's very close. There is an overlap where there are about 25 inches, a little over two feet, and so as part of this project, fireproofing is going to be required by building code officials so that it has, I think, a two-hour firewall between those two structures. And some work is likely to be done on the house as well, so that it will meet fire codes.
So the fire... is that adequate, when you're that close?
I mean, it's an existing structure, and they will do the fireproofing, and as long as it meets building code specifications, they'll approve it.
Further questions? Seeing none, Mr. DeBari?
I move to approve the request for an accessory dwelling unit conditional use at 730 Cherry Street in the R 5.4 zoning district, in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance, Title 20, Sections 20.05.020, 20.45.060, and 2085.070, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval.
And that motion is in order? Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I would like to see the electrical report on this before a permit is issued. Is that an amendment to this, or...? I didn't think so.
No, it's an administrative piece of business, Mr. Wilkins, so...
Okay. So if I could get that and maybe email?
Yeah. Assuming that council approves the ADU, we can certainly give you access to that report.
All right.
Yep. Further discussion? Mr. DeBari?
So I know that a couple of people had some comments. Clearly, the building that is proposed to be the ADU is a non-conforming structure. It's been there for a long time, and perhaps the setup here isn't as ideal as it might have been, or perhaps is in some other places where detached accessory dwelling unit is a new building. But I think one of the things we've been interested in as a city is adaptive reuse of existing buildings, and while this is a bit of a shoehorn at some level in terms of, as Mr. Von Laasberg talked about, the parking being in the back and for the... specific for the accessory dwelling unit, and there's no door on the back of the ADU, clearly it's not as useful for the ADU as it would be for the main structure. All of this does appear to meet our ordinance, and of course, as Ms. Baker mentioned, all the applicable codes need to be met. So as I said, this may not be the most ideal situation, but it's the one before us and seems to meet our existing regs.
Ms. Bentley on the motion?
I agree. I agree with Councilwoman DeBari. I think that it's better to have this be a structure that has the inspections and is on our register and that we know exists. I think it's safer for the people who live there and for the neighborhood. And also, the point of the ADU ordinance was to have some adaptive reuse of some of these structures. So I'm going to support the motion.
Mr. Wilkins on the motion?
So I'm... I'm going to support the motion. For one single family home, this is put in other residences, so no longer makes it a single-family home, and we have a next door on that. I don't believe the conditional use is appropriate for this type of use, these type of places. There is no other conditional use that allows another dwelling, not a lot, in a single-family home. So I don't know. I don't think so. The other thing is I'm only worried about this house being that close to the other house, and I'm going to say no, because I don't want to be responsible when a fire happens in that place and somebody dies. So that's definitely going to be an open topic to be considered.
Ms. West?
I'm going to support this motion. I think that this increased density obviously already exists and has existed for a long time, and I really appreciate it when new owners of properties bring these non-conforming structures into compliance, and I think that the overall safety is going to be better for the neighbors, especially once both buildings have been brought up to fire codes and those sorts of things. So I hope this passes.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. I think Ms. West covered an important point, and Mr. DeBari really kind of nailed that it is sort of shoehorning it in. It's not an ideal sort of situation, but I agree with everything, the way you characterized it, and it's in Ms. West's and my word, and I'm going to support it as well.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the request for the conditional use for an accessory dwelling unit, Bentley... Bentley votes yes. Kears... Kears votes yes. DeBari... DeBari votes yes. Hetal... Hetal votes yes. Hess... Hess votes yes. Jones... Jones votes yes. Marler... Marler votes yes. Von Laasberg... Von Laasberg votes yes. West... West votes yes. Wilkins... Wilkins votes no. And Armstrong... Armstrong votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
And the conditional use is approved. Our second public hearing this evening is on a petition to vacate portions of public rights of way known as North Avenue and Holburn Streets, located in Blocks 40 and 41 of Union Edition and Block 17 of Home Vale Edition. And our staff report this evening comes from Mr. Larson.
Good evening. Drew Larson, Development Services. And as the mayor pointed out, tonight we are discussing a petition to vacate portions of Holburn Street and North Avenue located within the Holiday Village Shopping Center. The request is from two property owners, R Montana Associate Limited Partnership and Winlot Missoula LLC. And tonight they are represented by Kirk Atkins and Jeff Smith of WGM Group. The proposed vacation is located in the City of Missoula Ward Three and the Rose Park Neighborhood Council. Again... Again, the proposed vacation is located within the Holiday Village Shopping Center, which fronts on Brook Street, near the intersection of Stevens Avenue. The subject rights of way are portions of North Avenue and Holburn Street, lying within the Holiday Village Shopping Center. Each right-of-way is 60 feet wide, and currently used as access aisles, which have been maintained by the shopping center for many years. There are no city right-of-way improvements within the existing rights of way, and there are no sidewalks in place along the Brook Street corridor, adjacent to the subject property. This slide also illustrates that at the point these street rights of way abut the Brook Street, we have reserved nine feet of the subject rights of way for future pedestrian connections running along the Brook Street corridor. So, here you can see, just a Google Street view of North Avenue. The sidewalks in place south of the right-of-way are actually, were installed for the CVS, during the CVS reconstruction and redevelopment of that corner. And here is another Google Street image of Holburn Street, and as you can see, the right-of-way is being used primarily as an access aisle and parking for the old Pet Nebula, I'm not sure what's there now, but the old pet store. So, the, associated with the old Pet Nebula, the subject properties have submitted a building permit with Development Services to remodel and demolish a portion of the existing building. You can also see that currently, this building is very close to the edge of the Brook Street right-of-way, which obstructs the view while entering Brook Street. Anecdotally, I was leaving CVS the other day, and I could barely see down the Brook Street corridor, and it was luckily a Sunday, but not ideal for certain. So, along with the building permit and proposed vacation, the applicants intend to use the subject rights of way to include onsite parking, parking lot landscaping, and additional landscaping within the vacated rights of way. There are existing public utility mains within the Holburn Street right-of-way, so staff has recommended condition of approval number one, requiring the property owners to record all necessary public utility easements prior to the City of Missoula recording the final resolution to close and vacate the subject rights of way. In addition, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency and the property owners have negotiated a nine-foot-wide pedestrian access easement along the Brook Street corridor to connect existing sidewalks, and to help complete the non-motorized facilities in the corridor. So, staff has recommended condition of approval number two, that requires the property owners to record the nine-foot-wide pedestrian access easement prior to the City of Missoula recording the final resolution to close and vacate the subject rights of way. WGM has provided the language and exhibits for those, and those are exhibits that are attached inside tonight. So, here are, again, the two conditions of approval, recording any and all necessary public utility easements within the Holburn Street right-of-way, and two, filing the nine-foot-wide pedestrian access easement along the Brook Street corridor of the subject property. So, with that, staff recommends that the Missoula City Council adopt a resolution to close and vacate the subject rights of way, subject to the two recommended conditions of approval. Thank you, and the applicants have actually prepared a short presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, and on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Good evening. Jeff Smith with WGM Group here, representing the applicant. Thanks, Drew. Drew did a really good job of covering quite a few of the items that I have, so I will breeze through a bit of this, but there are several elements that I think are important to point out. As Drew mentioned, the Holburn and North Avenue rights of way are currently used as access aisles within the Holiday Village Shopping Center now. Along with that, the applicants have maintained drainage lighting, snow removal, those city rights of way for the 30 years that they've owned the center, and the previous owner before them maintained them as well. The existing property line along Brook Street, Drew mentioned this, but right now, the property line is coincident with the back of the curb. So, this existing structure is built within the property line to within a couple feet of that curb, and of course, that precludes the construction of a sidewalk along that frontage, because there isn't available right-of-way. And as Drew mentioned, it also limits visibility at this intersection to the south for folks that are heading north, taking a right out of that driveway. I thought it was worth mentioning the 2003 Urban Land Institute report, Brook Street corridor. Some of the important elements required for transformation of the Brook Street corridor are development, course of non-residential services, streetscape, and sidewalks. The project that we're looking at tonight represents an improvement in neighborhood character, proves aesthetic, streetscape, and provides sidewalks. The portion of sidewalk along this property frontage is a piece of sidewalk that MRA and WGM Group as well has been working on for well over a decade. This action before us tonight allows the opportunity to create that sidewalk connection. Wanted to talk a little specifically about the improvements that are proposed to the site. So, of course, we've talked a lot about the sidewalk along Brooks. In order for that sidewalk to be constructed, the applicants are proposing to demolish 1,500 square feet of residential space, the north end of that Pet Nebula building that we all know well, because we see it whenever we drive Brook Street. With that, with that reduction of 1,500 square feet of retail space, of course, comes a reduction in their leasable space. So, not a small, small item for them. Of course, connectivity along Brook Street with the sidewalk, but also throughout the site, you can see we've shown sidewalk connections from the, from the street sidewalk to the buildings, and between the buildings themselves. Landscaping and aesthetic improvements are planned as well. Look at the site on the left. We know it well. It's a sea of asphalt. Our plan includes landscape islands, trees, and other aesthetic improvements. I wanted to talk a bit about the two trees in front of Little Caesar's. I know there were some questions relative to those trees. Because of the intersection spacing and the geometry required to connect the west side of this building, so if we look at the six parking spaces, west side of the building, the six parking spaces that are just north of Little Caesar's, connecting those through to what would be the vacated North Avenue requires, requires an intersection spacing that's set back from Brook Street, far enough so that vehicles don't queue and block that driveway, and that safe access is allowed and provided. The two trees in front of Little Caesar's just happen to fall right in the location of that safe access point, unfortunately, but with this project, we are installing trees within the landscape islands and improving the number of, improving and increasing the number of trees on the site. Take a look at the streetscape improvements that are proposed as part of this project. So, we're planning three entries along the Brook Street frontage. There's one here at kind of the northwest corner of the building, one along the center of the building along Brooks, and then one near the north, the north end of this building. This is the north facade of the building, glazing along that north end, and then that entry is just around the corner. This is the west elevation, creating a glazed entryway in the middle of the building at that new, that new connection on the Brooks. This, just for an overview, is taken from the URD 3 needs assessment. That stretch of missing sidewalk along Holiday Village's frontage is one of the largest gaps in the Brook Street network at the time. The right-of-way vacation and associated sidewalk easement here would allow for completion of that gap, addressing that. This exhibit shows the extent of curbside sidewalk in the Brook Street, along the Brook Street corridor. So, green and yellow on this exhibit are curbside sidewalk, and you can see curbside sidewalk exists really from the north end, is that mount, down to just south of Southgate Mall, before you see any Boulevard sidewalk. With this project, we're proposing a nine-foot-wide curbside sidewalk, which allows four feet for snow plowing and snow storage, while still maintaining a 60-inch or five-foot-wide In closing on what I'd like to cover, the vacation of these rights of way over the parking and drive aisles removes city responsibility and liability for these areas, and allows for construction of appropriate improvements onsite, and for the necessary improvements along Brooks. This vacation provides the owners with the ability to invest in the site, and allows redevelopment of this triangle, and improvement of the Brook Street frontage of the Holiday Village Shopping Center. The rights of way do not serve properties other than Holiday Village. That's important to note. Access to Brook Street from both of these rights of way is limited by medians along Brook Street. So, the North Avenue connection with Brooks is limited to a right-in, right-out because of those medians. So, decreases the utility of that as a right-of-way. The Holburn Street intersection with Brooks is limited to right-out. Left-out is not feasible from that, from that approach. So, the decision tonight represents an opportunity to fulfill the decade-long goal of creating an easement for sidewalk along this gap in the network, and allows for redevelopment and creation of a well-ordered, connected, and aesthetic site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed vacation? Mr. Wachtel?
Good evening. My name is Bob Wachtel. I'm currently Chair of the Missoula Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. I brought this before the board at our last board meeting, after I'd received information about this project in watching the Public Works Committee meeting at which this was discussed. This came before the board on March, at our March 7 meeting. We had significant discussion about various aspects of the pedestrian facility being proposed, being a nine-foot sidewalk, curbside against Brook Street. Our board developed and approved the following letter that was sent then to Mr. Larson, as well as copies to Denise Alexander in Permits and Land Use Manager, Mike Haynes, Director of Development Services, Ellen Buchanan, Director of Missoula Redevelopment Agency, and city council members. I'd like to read this letter to you at this time, as part of this comment. "We, the Missoula Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, have reviewed the petition to vacate portions of public right-of-way known as North Avenue and Holburn Street, located in Blocks 40 and 41 of Union Edition, and Block 17 of Home Vale Edition, and the discussion at the March 1, 2017 Public Works Committee meeting, and have these comments about collaboration for future pedestrian space in this area. The ideal pedestrian environment on Brook Street would be a wide sidewalk with Boulevard between roadway and sidewalks for safety, visibility, accessibility, and snow storage. We offer as an example the adjacent CVS sidewalks, which curves around obstacles to provide Boulevard space. The sidewalks should be as contiguous as possible with a minimum of curb cuts for safety of pedestrians and shortest possible crossings. We thank the involved parties for their efforts to improve the safety and accessibility of this area for all users, and encourage you to continue working towards the best possible pedestrian facilities." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wachtel. Anyone else? Ms. Loomis?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Loomis. I am a property owner at 1880 Brook Street, just across the street from the project. I sent an email earlier today to the council, so I appreciate it if you've gotten that. I am all for rehabbing any part of that center, any part of that block, any part of that building. Don't get me wrong, there's a lot of near-traffic accidents because of the limited visibility of the portion of the building that's proposed to be torn down. I'm also an advocate of completing whatever sidewalk networks we can. I'm not in favor of giving up city right-of-way for an easement that can be obtained other ways. I don't have the silver bullet. I don't have a way to tell you, this is how you should be getting the easement, but if the north part of that building is going to be torn down anyway, that nine-foot easement is going to exist, there are other ways to get it than by just handing over two pieces of city property to get what I feel is not very much in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis. Anyone else this evening? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Wilkins?
So, how much right-of-way do we have along Broadway? What's the... Can you answer that, Drew?
Um, you know, I'm not 100% on the exact width, but I know that it's narrow.
Only nine foot?
Well, the...
The right-of-way?
The right-of-way goes right up to back of curb. So, the building is built right up to the, or the right-of-way line.
I think Mr. Smith knows the answer to that question.
I didn't give me the answer, so go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Jeff Smith, for the record. The right-of-way line is concurrent with the back of curb along Brook Street, so right now, there is no, there is no room behind the curb for any type of public improvement.
So, there is no right-of-way there?
Correct. So, yeah.
I guess I don't understand what we're vacating, if there's no right-of-way there.
The interior road system is what would be vacated.
Okay, but that's not along Brooks, is it?
No.
So, we're the sidewalk, we're talking about, is there a right-of-way along there?
The developer would grant right-of-way as a function of this vacation.
Oh, okay. I got it. I got you. All right. Thanks.
I have Mr. DeBary, Ms. Armstrong, and Mr. Von Lausberg.
So, I have a question for Mr. Smith. I appreciate the effort that you went into describing the sidewalk needs for the area, so I'm curious why it is that the property owner, as a part of the remodel, needs to have some kind of quid pro quo with the vacation of the right-of-way in order to have the nine-foot easement for the sidewalk?
So, like I mentioned, thank you, John, like I mentioned, the 1,500 square feet that they would be removing on the north side of their, of their building, comes at a cost to them as far as leasable square footage.
That's, they're interested in taking that out anyhow?
They're interested in taking that out as part of this overall proposal.
But they wouldn't take it out otherwise, is what you're saying?
They would not. They would not. That is part and parcel with this vacation.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Larson. If you could go to the slide, I don't know what number it was, where you were looking towards the Holiday Village from Brook Street down Holburn Street? Yeah, that's the one. So, underneath that sign that's attached to the green part of the building facing the camera, there's a fire hydrant, I believe, and...
Appears to be one, yeah.
Yeah. And so, I'm curious, is that going to be right in the middle of the easement for the sidewalk?
It does definitely appear to be within that nine feet, and so it would be required to be relocated.
At the expense of...
That is a great question. I know that the sidewalk will be constructed with MRA funds, and so I would assume it would be at the expense of MRA.
I see both Mr. Smith and Ms. Buchanan have potential answers there.
So, Ellen Buchanan, Missoula Redevelopment Agency, it's not at all untypical for us to relocate or adjust the location of fire hydrants as we build sidewalks in these areas. We've had to do that on a number of occasions in the Brooks corridor area and other parts of the city where we're doing sidewalks, so... And we also add fire hydrants where they're needed, using tax increment funds.
Ms. Buchanan, while you're there, so during the committee meeting, I mistakenly said that there was a break in connectivity for sidewalks along Brook Street further to the north and east, but I was mistaken. It's actually further to the south and west. So, can you just confirm that where the gold and silver exchanges now, there's a break of, in right-of-way there, or an opportunity to put in sidewalk, and then also a little further south than that, where the NV Electronics and Tippin-Buley property is as well?
Sure. And there are still some gaps in the sidewalks. When MRA made, well, let me back up. Before MRA got in the business of doing sidewalks along the Brooks corridor, Public Works, the city ordered in sidewalks wherever there was adequate right-of-way, or wherever they could get a property owner to grant an easement. They did not have funds to buy easements. When MRA embarked upon trying to complete as much of that network as we could in kind of a second phase, we did have the funding to purchase some easements. So, the sections that you see up here that are in yellow... So the sections that you see up here that are in yellow are the ones that MRA put in in the last five or six years. The sections in green, by and large, are the ones that the city had already had installed. All of those are curbside sidewalks. There's just simply not adequate right-of-way on that section of Brooks once you get north of Paxton to do anything else. But there are definitely still some gaps. Gold and Silver Exchange is one of the businesses that... One of the property owners who has not chosen to grant an easement. And in fact, in some of the cases, we actually vacated... The city council vacated little segments of right-of-way so that parking could be moved to the side of a business and we could get sidewalks on the Brooks side. So this is not unprecedented.
Further questions? Ms. Armstrong?
For Ms. Buchanan. Is this project getting any TIF assistance, like facade improvement program assistance?
They have not asked us for any assistance for anything they've done at Holiday Village.
Okay. My next question is for the developer. Would the owner be amenable to changing that glazing facade a bit to angle it to allow us a larger right-of-way if they received... If they perhaps got facade assistance from MRA?
That is not a proposal that we have discussed with them, so I would not be able to answer that on their behalf.
Because it seems to me if we angled that corner, that juts out, that little... There's kind of a little right-hand jog that would give us... Kind of make a win-win situation, make everybody a little happier, give us a wider right-of-way, give us a boulevard sidewalk. See that little... Yeah. If we had maybe cut it off as an angle there, it might give us a little more room and certainly would fit in better with the Brook Street Corridor plan that was just...
I think to speak to that maybe more global scale for this site, that nine-foot easement width and nine-foot sidewalk that's being proposed is about the maximum width that fits with their current site design. So if that question is in the context of the entire frontage, I think I can speak for their interests in saying that nine feet is the maximum width that they're amenable to at this point.
Mr. Von Losberg, question?
This is not the most important thing, but for Drew or whoever can answer it. The lighting that's been provided and drainage that's... The comments about these services have been provided on this area before. Is this just the lighting that's in that parking area, well within the existing... There's no separate lights that have been provided for those streets, are there? For the rights-of-way?
Illumination of those rights-of-way is accommodated by existing fixtures within their parcel.
That would have been there regardless?
Certainly. Maintenance of those rights-of-way as far as snow removal, asphalt surfacing. That's maybe the more important element of that.
One other question. Is there any kind of overlay to see... Maybe you showed it and I wasn't appreciating it. How visibility is improved with...
Yeah, I think, if you don't mind, let me go back to... This slide right here. You can get some appreciation for that visibility. So this corner of this building is about two feet behind the back of the curb. So imagine that building there from this... From the perspective of a parked vehicle here, you're looking through that building to obtain line of sight.
Yeah. That and the whole presentation would have been helpful in committee, but I have an imagination.
Ms. Marler?
I have some comments, but sticking with questions, I was wondering what kind of timeline this is on or if there's a deadline? Because I am interested in having some more committee discussion or staff discussion. I have a lot of... I don't know if I'll be able to get all my things answered tonight, but I don't want to kill this or vote it down or anything. I don't know if that's a question for Ms. Buchanan or Drew.
Question is a sense of urgency?
How sense... What is the sense of urgency?
Well, that... I will defer to them. But I was going to say that there's no statutory deadline for right-of-way vacation.
Mr. Smith? Or Ms. Buchanan?
I've been working on this for 12 years, so I suppose there's no sense of urgency. I think that the developer would like to move forward with this project, and Jeff can probably speak to that better than I can. They've been working on this plan for a while. So if there's anything driving the timeline, that would be it.
Mr. Smith?
With that perspective in mind, I believe that building permits have been sitting approved with this item outstanding since the end of December. So going on about three months, and they are anxious to begin construction.
Ms. Bentley?
This is a question for Drew. Drew, under our policy for the permits, for the building permits, would they have to build the sidewalk without TIF funding?
As I understand it, MRA is going to be building the sidewalk.
No, I understand that. And my question is, if MRA were not in the picture and the right-of-way was not an issue, would they have to build the sidewalks?
Yes.
Mr. Nugent is thinking slightly differently about that?
Whenever I hear agitation on this side, I have to acknowledge it.
The city can order in sidewalks in public rights-of-way, but you can't order in sidewalks on private property unless someone gives you an easement and gives you permission to do that.
Which today we don't have at this location. Ms. West?
I was wondering what the easement, if someone... If the city were to buy it, what it would cost? I don't know who could answer that, maybe Ellen?
No one's willing to take a wild guess at that. Mr. Smith?
Sorry. Bit of speculation on my part. What's a square foot of property in Midtown Missoula worth? Sorry. I'm asking because I'm truly not certain.
Twenty-two bucks.
Twenty-two dollars, times nine feet, $188 a square foot... A lineal foot from a willing seller.
Ms. Jones?
I know at committee, there was some discussion, I think, of the possibility of a transit easement that would be left on North and Holborn if this right-of-way was granted. So what's the status of that?
Mr. Smith, you're getting a command performance tonight.
To speak for the applicants, they are not interested in granting the sidewalk easement if a transit easement is retained through the North Avenue or Holborn Street.
Further questions?
So follow...
Ms. Jones?
I guess I'm just not understanding. I guess I see my point. My role as city councillor is we've got a plan for future generations. And if this is a main corridor in Missoula, a transit easement, as we try and have more and more transit in Missoula, totally makes sense to me. And I don't really see any downside. Can you explain the reasoning behind this?
So a couple of points to make towards this functioning as a transit easement. We took a look at the median in Brooks and the access from this right-of-way back onto Brooks a little bit earlier. Right now, I don't believe there's any preference from Mountain Line to use this area as a transit center. And I understand you're asking the 20-year question and not the immediate question. That said, from the applicant's perspective, their provision for that sidewalk would be independent from an easement being provided for a transit center. So their intent with this construction is construction of appropriate onsite parking improvements and complete vacation of the right-of-way with the provision of the two conditions that were included in the recommendation from staff.
So I guess what I'm hearing is they just don't want to do it. But I'm looking also on a separate issue. I'm looking on the right side at the site plan, and it looks like... I see where the sidewalk is. And then in between the sidewalk and the pavement, there's kind of the crosshatching where it looks... I'm going to assume that's landscaping. Is that correct?
You are correct.
So when I look at that, I just don't understand why in those landscaped areas we can't take that sidewalk and move it in a few feet and have some boulevard? Because if it's landscaping, who cares if this landscaping is to the left or to the right of the sidewalk? So is there some reason why we can't do that and create a sidewalk that people will want to walk on? Because I understand in areas it's going to pinch over and be on Brooks, but areas where we can create a boulevard, I don't see what the downside is to the owners on this. It's just where are they watering the grass?
That's along this frontage here? That's along Brooks. So...
The triangles, where the triangles of landscaping are?
Certainly. I can speak to what the applicants are interested in providing and understanding that Ellen and the city have been working on this particular sidewalk easement in this form for well over a decade. The nine-foot-wide sidewalk easement is what these folks are willing to dedicate in exchange for the removal of their 1,500 square feet of retail space and improvements to the site.
Ms. Bentley?
This is a question for the applicants. So the applicant is the Holiday Village, right, that owns the whole area? And so would the applicant be willing to have a transit easement somewhere else along that frontage? Like maybe not right in front of this building, but somewhere else along that frontage? And because this committee is aware, and we've been working really closely with Mountain Line, we do want to build transit on that strip. And we've been working with, you know, WGM Group too.
Absolutely. Along the Brook Street frontage is what you're referring to. That element has not been presented to the applicant, so I wouldn't be able to speak for them to that regard either.
Okay. Well, on that note, I think this should go back to committee, and maybe you could take that to the applicants, that idea and some of the other ones that you've heard tonight, and we can discuss it in committee.
Ms. Bentley has asked that this item be returned to committee. That's appropriate. Why don't we get any other questions that may exist out there? Ms. West?
I just wanted to ask if you were familiar with the Brook Street Corridor. I think we called it Report, not Plan. The study that was recently presented to us and wrapped up, and it definitely identified this as a hub along the corridor. So have you read it or has it informed any of the choices here?
That report was issued a couple of weeks ago. When was that report issued? This, like I had mentioned, this permit was submitted last fall. That said, the planning associated with the sidewalk easement and the improvements on the site has been done in coordination with a lot of planning that's gone on along the Brook Street. We've mentioned five or six times now the decade-long effort that's gone into securing this sidewalk easement.
Further questions? Mr. Von Losberg?
Anyone who knows? What's the width of the sidewalk that is associated with the CVS improvements?
And actually, let's just get the questions out there. We don't have to answer them tonight since we're going back to committee.
Yep. And then I'd just like to repeat, since it's going back to committee, I'd like to see information from the street perspective relative to visibility around that corner.
Ms. Jones?
The only other issue, and this perhaps goes to MRA, but it could be wrapped into future committee meetings, is if the big trees are going to be cut down, and those are the only mature trees between Mount and the fairgrounds on that entire stretch of Brooks. If the big trees are going to be cut down that are in front of Little Caesar's Pizza, then I know new landscaping will go in, but I think we should look into having stratus or silva cells with those trees so that the trees actually grow instead of having stunted trees, since we're taking out the big trees. Not we, I'm sorry. But since the big trees will be removed. So that's a topic that I would like to address.
Any other questions that folks need to prepare anything for, for committee? Mr. Heskey, you have a sense of when you might hear that?
I guess that is somewhat contingent on Mr. Larson and Ms. Buchanan's availability and to, I guess, get answers to these questions and be present.
Good to go on Wednesday?
Okay. If we had some time on Wednesday, we can hear it this Wednesday.
Okay. With that, the item has been returned to committee. Just a couple of quick notes. I had my first foot-long hot dog at Hermes Drive-In, which is now Little Caesar's. The corridor could use some improving. A couple of things to keep in mind, one of which is that I have seen the design in an effort to reconfigure some traffic around Holiday Village purely conceptual, but traffic drops off considerably at Stevens as we are north, maybe northeast bound on Brooks. And the preservation of that right-of-way with a lane change might make a whole bunch of sense over time. So that right-of-way, preserving the right-of-way beyond this easement, there is opportunity within that right-of-way that you all ought to at least think about as we move forward that wouldn't in any way preclude transit and could actually... Actually, it might enhance it. Also might enhance the nature of that pedestrian corridor. So if you had the nine feet here and considered moving from a four-lane system with a raised median to a three-lane system, it would still accommodate the traffic. It might make a lot of sense, slow things down, create pedestrian scale, et cetera. So something to think about from the urban design annals. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we have no additional public hearings this evening. I'll pass on communications from the mayor. We'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Ms. Hedall and Ms. Jones and Mr. Von Losberg and Mr. Hess. Mr. Wilkins? Ms. Marler?
I need to take myself off of the Public Safety and Health Committee so I don't interfere with the quorum issue. And did anyone else have committee assignments to change? I think that's it. Oh. We were going to discuss it, but now we're just going to go for it. I am going to resign soon from A and F Committee Chair, and I would like to nominate Michelle Kears.
So that...
I don't think that happens. I thought you were going to resign from City Council once.
And you all get to do that at another time in your committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant membership.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's it. I don't resign a lot from stuff, so sorry.
Ms. Bentley?
I'm debating joining the Public Works Committee, just so I can deal with this issue and some other sidewalk issues coming up, but I think I'll hold off.
Ms. Armstrong? Ms. West?
So I went and pruned trees at the Moon Randolph Homestead this weekend. And I just wanted to remind folks that this is a great asset that we have as a community and that it opens in May Saturdays to the public, and you can just walk in anytime between 11:00 and 5:00.
Ms. Kears? And Mr. Debary? All right. With that, we do not have any committee reports this evening. We have, as an item of new business, our legislative update. You all are in receipt of our report. A couple of items of note today. The House Bill 473, which is the road and bridge infrastructure bill, survived House appropriations today, which is another significant step in the right... Pardon me, in the right direction. And we'll continue to work with legislators to move that through the system. But that was a nice piece of business today. The so-called bathroom bill died in committee today, which was a thing of beauty, in my opinion. So we were glad of that and frankly, a little bit surprised. Other items of note, of course, are in your report. And I know that Ms. Kears has some items of interest this evening, so we can start with her. But anyone else who wants to comment, please let me know. Ms. Kears?
SB 155 is to prohibit local government regulation of agricultural seed, which we are opposition of. And it passed, the legislature says online that it's enrolling in final preparation process. And in the report, it's... I just don't think the report was updated. And I'm wondering, sort of, you know, the session's winding down. And I'm wondering, sort of, you know, the session's winding down, do we have a post-session impacts discussion, or can we get a impact statement about this particular bill that we were in opposition of that did pass through legislature?
So, we do a legislative recap, and depending on the nature of what has passed and not passed, we do everything ranging from, you know, we'll have, in some cases, we do subdivision regulation cleanup based on new regs, so we can do all of that recapping. We likely wouldn't spend a great deal of time unless council were interested in understanding impacts of a particular bill. And I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what was this one again?
SB 155, I just remember Councilman Von Losberg talking about it. It says basically prohibiting local government regulation of agricultural seed? I don't know.
Agriculture what?
Seed.
Seed? Oh, yeah, that's a thing. We could certainly, if it sails through the session, we can certainly see what the impacts are. My hunch is there will be rogue seed, but I could be wrong. It's been amended, and we actually proposed an amendment that the city attorney would be the sole enforcement agency on this item, so. Ms. Kears, other items?
Yes. SB 189 has also passed through the legislature and has gone to the front of the governor, transmitted to the governor is what it's called, and that one is really another bill that we opposed, revising protest provisions for special districts, allowing only returned ballots to count towards revision, or protest requirements. So, if one, two people responded and one opposed, that would be 50%, and special districts would be counted down, and we were in opposition, so if the governor signs it, I also want to know about the impacts to our community. The next one is different, so changing to House Bill 611. My question, and this is the bill that we talked about last week, generally revising state laws related to immigration and refugees. We, through consultation, voted to oppose this bill, but it still says likely opposed, so I just want our vote to be updated because it took some effort. Thank you.
Technical glitch would be my guess. Anything else on the legislature? All right, we have no additional new business, are there additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous reports, petitions, announcements, ramblings? Yes, Mr. Hess?
I'm just figuring out the committee schedule for Wednesday with the additional time in Public Works, and I'm wondering if the clerk's office has any preferences. I'd like 40 minutes. Public Works is going to be tight as it is, so we could move everything earlier, but not sure how that affects other things.
Do you want 40 minutes total or an additional 40 minutes?
I'd like an additional 40 minutes.
So, you want a total of an hour?
A total of 80 minutes, or in 20 minutes.
An hour and 20 minutes. I think if we add it on to the morning, you're going to start your meetings around, looks like fairly early. 8:20 or so. There is an hour between committees, we could also move budget committee and committee of the whole to later in the afternoon, if that's preferable.
We could also do two Public Works meetings and just add one at the end of the day.
We could add one on to the end of the day, so an extra hour from 3:00 to 4:00 to take up Public Works, to take up the street vacation item.
I don't think we'd need an hour for that, I think 40 minutes would be safe.
40 minutes? Okay, so we'll have two Public Works meetings, the first will go from 11:20 to noon, and the second will go from 3:10 to, you said 40 minutes, then they'll be going till 3:50.
Okay. Everybody got that one? Fantastic. With that, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service, and we are adjourned.